Good evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 27, 2014. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Glenn Harless, Thanksgiving Lutheran Church, 3702 370th Plaza in Bellevue.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invite you to pray with me. Dear God, our Creator and Redeemer, we thank you for this great land and nation which you have given as our heritage. We have just observed Memorial Day weekend and we thank you again for the many men and women who over the centuries in this country have served in our armed services and in some cases have given the supreme sacrifice that we might enjoy all the liberties which we have. We thank you that one of those liberties is that we can participate in the political process and we thank you for that. Lord, tonight we ask your blessing upon our city council as they do the business of our community. We pray that you would grant them wisdom to make wise decisions that reflect good stewardship of the taxpayer dollars which they have been entrusted as well as decisions, Lord, that will be great blessings to the people of this community. And so we thank you for this great privilege and we invite you into the process tonight. I pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I call this meeting to order. Kay, would you please take role?
Mr. Carmichael. Mrs. Sanyuk.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Knudsen.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
For those of you who do not know me, I am Kathy Sanyuk and as the President of the City Council, I am presiding over this meeting in the absence of the mayor. She sends her apologies that she could not be here. I am not, however, acting mayor, so you don't need to refer to me as such. I am simply presiding this evening. Three, approval of, oh, I'm sorry, two A. This meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, which is posted in the entry to the council chambers. Three A, approval of agenda. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Knudsen. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Three B, approval of consent agenda. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Preister. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Three C is under consent. Four, approval of claims is consent. Five, special presentations, American Cancer Society Relay for Life Day, Saturday, June 7, 2014. Is there anybody present? Whereas Relay for Life is the signature activity of the American Cancer Society and celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers, remembers loved ones lost to the disease, and empowers individuals and communities to fight back against cancer. And whereas money raised during the Relay for Life of Sarpy County supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays by helping people stay well, by helping people get well, by finding cures for cancer, and by fighting back. And whereas Relay for Life helped fund more than $150 million in cancer research last year. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Council President Kathy Sanyuk, do hereby proclaim Saturday, June 7, 2014, as Relay for Life Day in Bellevue, Nebraska, and encourage citizens to help finish the fight against cancer by participating in the Relay for Life of Sarpy County at Papillion La Vista South High School from 6:00 PM to midnight. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Councilwoman Sanyuk. As discussed earlier, I have a brief Advisory Committee report under number three.
Yes. Sorry, my bad.
This is specifically in reference to the Old Town Development Committee, of which I am a member. At our last council meeting, and I won't discuss particulars because it was done during executive session, we were given a proposal by the Old Town Development Committee in reference to the redevelopment of Old Town Bellevue, which as you know is, it's really decades past due to redevelop this area. And although no decisions were officially made, the question that I have for council and for the city attorney is are we going to be provided guidance so we can move forward on this issue? Because it feels like right now it's just floating in the air. We're not taking action of any sort because we're not getting the information that we need in order to take that action. And so I ask on behalf of the Old Town Development Committee and as a councilperson that we get some guidance from our attorney as to what we can and cannot do. That was the discussion during the executive session, is that we need guidance from you. And so can we get something sooner than later? And can we please share that with Old Town Development Committee so they know what they can do and when they can move forward if at all?
Yeah, we can go ahead and provide some guidance and get it to you as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to number six, liquor licenses. Saint Bernadette's Church, application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer at a fundraiser on the church grounds at 7600 South 42nd Street from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM on July 13, 2014. Is there anyone here to represent Saint Bernadette's? Please come to the podium. State your name and address and sign in, please.
Name is Doug Creasel, 1102 East Carey Street.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council, from Mr. Carey?
Creasel.
Creasel, I'm sorry, Mr. Creasel. I see none. All right, Mr. Creasel, if you would step aside, then I will open the public hearing on this item. If anyone is wanting to speak about this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Councilman Cook.
I'll make a motion that we approve, make a recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the approval of the application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer at a fundraiser on the church grounds at 7600 South 42nd Street from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM on July 13, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes. Thank you, sir.
All voted yes.
The only thing I have is the fees. Who do I hand those to?
If you'd hand those to Sabrina, she'll take care of that.
Thank you. Six B, Anthony Vernon, holder of liquor license number IB015597 for Catfish Lake Restaurant, application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits at a charity fundraiser to be held at the Reed Center, 1200 Lord Boulevard, from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM on June 20, 2014. Is there anyone here to represent? Thank you.
Anthony Vernon, 102 East 19th Avenue.
Councilwoman Blood.
Anthony, it didn't say in our packet what the fundraiser was for. Can you clarify that for us?
It's a cancer fundraiser for Scott Smith. He's got throat cancer.
Thank you.
And Mr. Vernon, will there be music at this fundraiser?
You know, I don't think so. We're going to have off-duty police officers there for security. It's basically spaghetti feed to try and raise money.
Thank you, sir. And if you would step aside, then I will open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak about this, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'd like to make a motion to recommend it in Nebraska Electric Commission for approval for Anthony Vernon, holder of liquor license number IB015597 for Catfish Lake Restaurant, for an application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits at a charity fundraiser to be held at the Reed Center, 1200 Lord Boulevard, from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM on June 20, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Seven, ordinances for adoption, there are none. Eight, ordinances for public hearing. A, ordinance number 3765, rezoning lots 1 through 203 and outlots A through F, Spring Ridge, from AG RS72, RD60, and BG, to RS72, RD60, RG20, and BG. Applicant is Orchard Valley, Inc. General location, 25th Street and Rose Lane Road and Lola Avenue east of 21st Street. Is there someone here to represent Orchard Valley?
Except that I need to read the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kay, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3765, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 25th Street and Rose Lane Road and Lola Avenue east of 21st Street, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. My name is Robert Peterson. I represent the applicant, Orchard Valley. The owner is Melvin Sudbeck. What we're requesting, obviously, is the rezoning and replanning for property. This is on an overhead, but the property lies east of 25th Street and between the Kennedy Freeway.
Oh, sir, could you speak into the microphone? Just swing it around, yeah.
All right. Maybe I can do it this way. I'm sorry.
You can remove it or, yeah, swing it around.
Oh, good, thank you, Doug. This is a kind of a difficult piece of property where it lies because it's west of the Kennedy Freeway and there's a pretty substantial drainage ditch that runs through this. Part of this, what we're requesting, was here before the council a year ago on the south end, which is on the other parcel here. But there were issues with Gifford Road because it was basically, let's get Gifford Road fixed.
You mean, do you mean Gilmore Lake Road?
I'm sorry, Gilmore Lake Road. So we went back to, with the planning and the engineers, with the Sarpy County engineer to try to start all over again and let's see what we can do because access has been the primary issue here. So in the blue, we've determined to make a Phase 1 project and that includes the construction of a new access to 25th Street here. It's Rose Lane Road, which will serve through Phase 1. And if you can see, I tried to outline that in blue, which is roughly 80-some single-family lots. Spring Ridge is to the south and what we tried to do to make this compatible with the properties there, all of these properties to the west of 21st Street will be R72s. Our 60s are all east of 21st Street. We proposed to do this in five phases. The first phase here in blue, the second phase will be in green, and then the third phase will be within the yellow. There's roughly, I think, 100 and, we have a total of 202 single-family lots. Now this is what's proposed as Phases 4 and 5. And that's where the Gilmore Lake Road issue comes in. We've worked hard with the VFW and with the engineers and with the attorney for Spring Ridge, or for Spring Creek, to try to work out this Gifford Lake Road because that has been a real issue. We've worked out the access issues so that we could have ultimately Gifford Lake Road.
Gilmore.
Why do I always say Gifford Lake? Gilmore Lake Road to hook into the south 20th Street property that comes in here so that we can have access. The VFW club sets here, we will have access here. And there is other access that'll come through Lola ultimately when we get there. But when this went to planning, the planning said we're not going to do anything with 4 and 5 until we get this resolved. So this is kind of what we visualize as being, pardon me, a couple of years down the road. One of the issues, Spring Creek had an agreement to put that road in, but they had some financial issues and that was, you know, something they didn't have any control over. So they're trying to get their base up. I spoke with their attorney and what we anticipate is by the time we get through the first three phases of the north parcel of that, we'll have sufficient tax base that pursuant to a four-party agreement, we can have the funds to make improvements to this road. I've drafted that inter-local agreement. I've circulated it for city attorney here, to the Sarpy County Attorney, and to the attorney for Spring Creek. And everybody's pretty much on board, although we have some fine tuning to do on that. But if we can go back to the first one there. As I said, we're going to put an access road, a much-needed access road in here and that will be part of our first phase. We will also have then a, once we do this first phase, we have another access that goes out here to, I think this is called Daggett, which ultimately would allow us to get out through Spring Creek. But our anticipation is that once we get this new access way in here, it's going to open up basically ingress, egress issues from Spring Creek and.
And that road, Dagmar Road, that's under the.
It's under the.
Power.
And it will not run all the way to 25th Street. That just makes a little hook here and then hooks onto 21st Street as it comes out of Spring Creek. But I guess I'd answer any questions. What we're proposing here, according to the projections, is that once we have all this done, we'll add a little over $51 million in tax value here to the county.
Councilwoman Blood.
I have several questions. What is the general value of the homes?
Well, the homes here, to the east of 21st Street, the developer plans on $250,000 approximately for those houses. These will be higher-priced houses here. You know, 250 in north, probably 350 and 400. They will be very compatible with the Spring Creek properties.
And then as you can see by how many people we have in the gallery tonight, there's a lot of concerns about access to 25th Street. Have you had an opportunity to actually sit down and speak with the neighbors that have complaints and concerns? Or have they only been able to see this information in planning and tonight?
Well, we have, I should say, I don't know that my client has. Personally, I have not. The issue primarily was what kind of properties. And I know because I visited with the council, their attorney for that development. And the issue is twofold. One, are you going to run a bunch of traffic through our subdivision? That's one of their concerns. And number two, are you going to be building quote starter homes there that will depreciate the value of our homes? And I think we can answer that we're putting expensive homes here. I mean, these are 72-foot lots. And by this access, if you look at how they would have to ingress and egress out of this, to get out of this development, they would have to come through here, down Dagmar, and through 21st Street to get out. And we're going to have, once we get this done, we're going to have access to get out of there on 21st Street, on 21st Street, and Rose Lane. And I don't know, we look at this as perhaps creating better ingress and egress than they have now.
And I have to say that a lot of people will always wonder why we don't have Shadow Lake. Well, the reason we don't have Shadow Lake is because we haven't had the rooftops like this to show that we need a mall in Bellevue. And as long as we continue to build residential areas, we need to start looking forward to building nicer homes like that if we want strong economic development. So I welcome the fact that they aren't starter homes. There's a place for starter homes in Bellevue, but we have plenty of those. We need the nicer homes. And what I ask you is what I ask of all our developers, is that it's just nicer if you can find time in your busy day, even after this meeting tonight, to sit and speak with the residents because what we often find is that when they're able to speak with you one-on-one and show you their concerns, quite often the developers are able to say, or whoever represents the developers are able to say, well, this isn't an issue and this is why. Or I hear what you're saying and let's see what we can do. I'm not asking that you make any promises, but I am asking because we like to see the symbiotic relationship between developer and the neighbors. It just makes it easier on us.
Well, and I understand. One thing that you should know, this developer doesn't build cookie cutter houses. These are not cookie cutter houses.
I'm aware.
He's got a number of different developments and, you know, he does some specs, but they're all off of their own plans. And, you know, I mean, he tries to build as many, you know, custom homes as he can possibly build.
I appreciate.
Most all of these would be anticipated to be custom homes.
I think the biggest concern, since you've already said that in reference to the value of their homes, that you're building nicer homes, is in reference to the traffic. And I think although we're addressing it tonight, it's just a benefit to let our citizens be heard when developers come in. And again, you don't have to do that. I ask pretty much everybody that comes in front of us to do that because we find that there's fewer growing pains as a result of it because everybody's on the same page then.
Well, we certainly will do that. I don't have a.
I would appreciate that.
Are there any other questions? Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you. Sir, I have really actually three concerns. I'm not really of the opinion that the approval of the Gilmore Lake Road agreement at Phase 4 is a good thing, especially with the history we have with the original subdivision agreeing to do it and it never got done. Secondly, the ingress and egress points at 21st and 23rd. I'm somewhat concerned that the improvement to city standard streets would stop at the northern boundary of the subdivision. I am concerned about traffic going up Maury Drive on, I believe you said it was Phase 5, from the multifamily proposal on the very southern end of the project.
Down here?
Yes, sir. And the other concern I have, which was expressed in the public comments session last week, and I think is probably better addressed to our Public Works Director, is has there been a traffic study done that would incorporate the vehicular traffic from this subdivision going south to 25th, which is primarily the only logical ingress/egress point from and to the Kennedy Freeway corridor? It's going to cause a pretty significant traffic jam at that point, Jeff.
Mr. Roberts or Mr. Chuck, do you want to respond to that?
A traffic study was completed at the request of the Public Works Department for the development of Phases 4 and 5, the southernmost. The conclusion is that those, the intersection at Gilmore and, Gilmore Lake and 25th and Maury and 25th will continue to operate at the worst a Level C level of service and at best is up to a Level A up at 25th and Gilmore Lake Road. There obviously is a increase of traffic as a result of this. The only improvement that was noted was a northbound right turn lane from 25th onto Maury. But again, the analysis was done and it continues to operate well within standards of residential traffic.
Okay. One other question too, sir. There is an existing creek that runs through that property. Will that be tubed and improved?
Well, yes, that's basically, and perhaps Mr. Schuch or Jeff could address that, that has to be resolved before the Gilmore Lake Road is improved.
Yes, sir.
And that's anticipated to take care of a lot of the flooding problems that happen down here at the VFW. But that, and maybe Jeff can address that where they're at, but that's a concern and everybody realizes that that has to be done before we can complete the improvements to this road. But it's anticipated that that'll take care of a lot of that drainage issue.
Well, right now that project's on hold because the Corps of Engineers is requiring a individual permit, which at this time would probably take anywhere from two to three years to get approved. So the NRD pulled their funding with it. They didn't continue on until we get to a place where it's closer to being able to fund. The only way we could get around this was to put a short bridge over it, but the NRD won't, they won't contribute. If it's a bridge, it has to be a culvert. And the culvert was causing issues with wetlands and the amount of channel that was being reduced. So that's the issues we have with it. So right now it's totally on hold until we know what this development's going to do.
And in response, that's one of the reasons that we, we had focused on this, if you may recall, a year ago. But because of those issues with the Corps, we moved up to the north part of this and determined if we start there, it will give an opportunity for this issue to get resolved that we don't have any control over.
Any other questions from the council? All right, seeing none, thank you. Before I open this item up for public hearing, could I see a show of hands, please, of those of you who plan to speak on this item? Thank you. Okay, there's a fair number of you, so I'm going to limit your testimony to three minutes. I now open the public hearing on ordinance number 3765. Anyone wishing to speak about it, please come forward. State your name and address and sign in.
Good evening. Todd Melcher, 9130 South 67th. However, I own a property at 2307 Virginia Street on the north end of the proposed subdivision. Some of the concerns that we have is, they were saying a few minutes ago about these houses are going to be $250,000. In the original proposal that I received, two weeks prior to the last planning commission meeting, it was stated 132, 180,000. At the planning commission meeting, it was stated 190 to 250,000. Now they're saying they're starting at 250,000. Six weeks, they've changed the value three times. I don't understand that personally. The traffic study, who performed that traffic study is a question I have. And where is the, I know it's documentation, but how can you honestly get a real traffic study depending upon how many, how many families will be in the multifamily dwellings? You know, there's, obviously, most families have at least two cars per family going in and out of there. That's a concern that we have. And I know for a fact that they have not talked to any of the neighbors because no one's been contacted. We talked about that after the planning commission meeting, but they haven't talked to anybody. And the creek that runs through there is called, it's called Spring Creek now. It's a spring-fed creek that starts between, I believe, Virginia and Child's Road. That's where it starts, I believe. It could be a little bit further north. But as, that is completely spring-fed and it goes down to the VFW. My concern is where is all this drainage going to go to? Is it going to go down to this new housing? is all this drainage going to go to? Is it going to go down to this new housing area and anyone who buys there? Is there, you know, are we going to have sinkholes in the area? What's going to happen to these homes? That whole area, I mean, Sunrise is a key example. They built that, and there, they've had water problems there for years. I've got friends there that have water problems all the time. Is this the same sort of area, just on the other side of 25th Street? That's a concern that I have. And when it comes to, you know, they, they want to do the roads coming off of 23rd and 21st, but they're not going to improve those roads right now. Their plan is potentially to do that. While everyone on those roads have septic systems, if they do in fact fix those roads, it's going to take property from the people that live there, and they have septic, septic systems that come out towards the street. What happens if they tear into those septic systems? Are the people that have those septic systems, are they going to have to pay to tap into the sewer system if their septic system gets destroyed? Whose, whose expense is that? The current homeowner? Is that fair to them? No, it's not. Those are just some of the concerns we have.
I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Roberts if you want to respond to anything in regard to the drainage, or who did this traffic study?
The traffic study was performed by Felsberg Holt in Ulavig. That's a traffic engineering firm out of Omaha. As far as the drainage goes, that's been beat to death for now a couple of years. And I could have Doug come up and speak on it, but there's several areas that's going to have water detention in order to slow down the flow and then to just release at a slower rate, so it doesn't cause the issues that they're having now. But I could have Doug elaborate more on that if he has some more information.
Doug?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Melcher.
Gilmour, 10836 Old Mill Road, Thompson, Resonant, Dorna. Yeah, the city requires detention on the site, so, and, and we have to meet those requirements. We do have several locations where we're detaining water, probably down in the Gilmore Road a little more than we would normally do, just to help, as we've been working with Jeff, just to, to deal with that water a little more. But the water has to be released at an existing condition, so that's what we'll be detaining it to.
Councilman Preister?
There will be two forms of drainage. One, the runoff when we have storm events. The other will be the natural spring-fed runoff that will occur normally. How will the detention ponds affect just the normal spring? Is it going to collect all of that water too? Is that going to continue?
No, that, that'll continue on through the creek the way it does today. That would be something that would be in existing condition, and so it would be allowed to continue on at existing conditions.
Okay, so the detention ponds will mainly catch the large rain events and that runoff that would be excessive?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Carmichael?
Chris, this may be more appropriate to you in reference to that gentleman's question about eventual improvement of the roads up to 21st and 23rd. Can you tell the council and the public what the right-of-way width of those streets is existing today?
They appear to be 50-foot right-of-way width. I'm, I'm telling you, I'm not absolutely certain. But if, if they are 50-foot width, any improvements they have should be on their own property, and 50-foot is a standard width of a right-of-way. So if their septic or anything else is built on their own property, they shouldn't have an issue with that.
Thank you.
They are 50.
And they were planted back, probably close to 100 years ago.
Councilwoman Blood?
Doug, are you able to answer the question in reference to the value of the homes? Or is that a question for him?
Actually, Melvin Sedback is here. He'd probably be better to answer.
That'd be great, if we could just answer that for the citizen.
Melvin Sedback, 16255 Woodland Drive. Value of the homes, I think they were a little misrepresented earlier. Bob and I talked about this, but the R60 will be starting probably around $180,000 and up, and the R72 zoning will be about $250 and up.
And how many in the lower price will, will there be?
There's 201 lots or 70 in the R72, so there'd be 130 in the, the R60 zoning.
Thank you for clarification.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Come forward.
Lynn Sledge, 8605 South 21st Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, 68147. We knew that this land was going to be built up sometime, and the City Planning Commission, when their meeting was, they said, "Oh, this land is not being put to use." Yes, it has been. It has been farmed continuously. That has helped the water flow. And then, now we have this again. Last, last year, we voted this, you voted this guy down for 147 houses. Now he wants 203. We live on Lot 76 of Child Estate Acres. We have over two acres. We will have five houses within our frame on the south side of us. To me, that's dense. What's going to happen to our road? We're not going to improve our road when their equipment is ruining our road, which it will, because that blacktop is not that thick. And I would cordially invite all of you to come out and look at this land, the way it slopes, and Spring Creek addition, our addition. We're all acreages here on 21st Street. This is not going to blend. These little R60-whatever crackerbox houses that were supposed to have started at 150,000 at the City Planning Commission now is up to 180. I, I don't understand where the difference keeps going. But I would love to have all of you come out, and I would personally walk you through the whole thing. But please, come out. Thank you.
I have a couple of things. The water, the water is really my biggest concern. It really is. And I was an ironworker for 31 years. And when we build a building out of steel, the steel had to support three times the maximum load that that building was ever going to, going to handle for the weight. Okay, so what is the specs for this water? The internet says this drainage is adequate. Well, it, and on a federal building, it's five times. The structural is five times instead of three times. Okay, so adequate to me doesn't get me a, is it adequate for a one-inch rain? A three-inch rain? A three-inch rain, two days in a row? Three-inch rain, three days in a row? We've had flooding and mudslides. Bellevue knows what flood's all about. We, you're, you're still dealing with it. You know what the mudslides have been on the news. I'm very, very concerned. Mr. Preister, a year ago, you walked up the hill from 21st Street up that lane, you said, reported that the dogs barked at, and you couldn't believe how steep that was. Am I correct? All right. When Phase Three comes in, that elevation is probably 25 feet, if not more, probably 35 feet, actually, higher than the creek, guaranteed. Where's that water going to? Adequate? Is adequate going to get it? I'm serious. I, I'm really serious about adequate. Then, right before this meeting tonight, I walked right up the power line where this Dagmar Avenue is going to be. It's going to be from 21st Street up to Phase Three. Well, I stepped it off. There's so many weeds and stuff, I couldn't get a tape measure. I stepped it off. It is 42 feet from pole to pole. 42 feet. I've got a pretty good step. I know, I know, I can measure pretty well my step. I stepped from sidewalk to sidewalk on 21st Street. It is 45 feet from sidewalk to sidewalk. Now, that street's going to be awful narrow, and that, to me, I'll bet you there's going to be any sidewalks. If there is, something's got to be squished. So not only am I worried about that water coming down that hill, I'm worried about the street. I'm worried about kids walking up and down that street. And then I'm also really worried about the creek. I, my, the creek, I've lived there almost two years now. Not quite. My lot is 85 feet, not 72, 85 feet. You're going to tell me them houses are going to be the same as my house on, on 72 feet compared to 85 feet? I don't think so. And the creek right behind me right now, in the two years, it is receding. I bet you it's got a, we've had about four times, so it's about the bank, and it's already, I bet it's a foot wider, if not two feet wider than it was two years ago.
Mr. Blake, time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Preister?
Could we get a response in terms of the adequacy on that drainage, Chris? Do you have any comments to, I don't know what the adequacy is either, so if it's, I think, a valid question?
It meets our ordinance on stormwater retention. Captures the first half inch, and then releases it at a five-year, well, has to detain a five-year storm, and then it's released at precondition, pre-existing conditions. And there is a difference between hydrology and structural. Structural does use a safety factor of anywhere from two to three times what, what is required. Hydrology is based on our ordinance on what we capture and retain.
Okay. I'm David L. Deporick. I live at 8302 South 21st Street. I've been there about 17 years. I moved out of Omaha because kind of, I was on busy intersection. I was down just north of Harrison on 42nd Street. I was down there where Gross High School and Bryan High, the football games were going, the boom boxes would shake the house. I moved into Bellevue. I live right there in the southwest corner of 21st and West Child's Road. Now, I come down here to this meeting today, and on the way down, I counted the houses from 21st Street down to 19th Street that are on West Child's Road. There's 10 houses in there on both sides of the street, and one empty lot, which is Mr. Holovar's. That, that lot's 150 by 150. My lot's 132 by 130 something else. I don't know what it is, why. And I moved there because it was a nice-sized lot. My concerns are, you widening the street and get, I'm, I'm going to be right on top of the street when you do widen it. The street is not capable of taking as much traffic as you're going to put on it. And then, I'm listening to all the different kinds of houses they're putting in there, and they added this new bunch of houses down behind 21st Street, behind 80, the 8700 South 21st Street, where Doug Lawrence lives there. And I just can't believe people were going to build, build a house down in there on that hill. That, I, I, I told them in the meeting with the Building Commission, I says, "I can't believe people don't want to be up on top that hill where you have all those cul-de-sacs, and they want to be looking out over that interstate, and they got free air behind them. There's traffic back there." When, I hear the train when I'm going to sleep at night sometimes. I don't hear the interstate traffic. One of the gentlemen's from the Building Commission said, "Well, that's, that area is, that area is not worth nothing. You're putting all those small lots up in that one area where it's actually a nice building area, and, and you're dumping all the nice houses down along the creek." I'd never want to live along a creek. This, this outfit that built, drew this thing up, I, I can, this, this thing is built like they built houses back in the 50s, in like a track zone. The housing addition, the way they got it set up, looked like a bunch of dog kennels in there that are so close together, like you're on a monopoly board. I just, that, that area in there doesn't look nothing like the area the way it's built now. I can't see any reason to approve something that's being built with all those houses like that, and I don't think Bellevue needs to grow that fast.
Time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Draper. I live at 9807 South 24th Street. And in the packet that was included on the subdivision, that's right up here at 24th and Maury. That's where my house is, right at the top of the hill where the proposed traffic for Maury's going to come through. I, I would ask if any of these members of the city council, since this last time, because I encouraged you last time to come out, and look, I, I wondered if any of you went down Maury Drive and went down to the very bottom of Maury Drive where that hits the creek? And did you talk to any of the neighbors that are right down there? Now, I went there today, and I talked to some of them, the neighbors, and some of the neighbors still didn't know that this was going to happen. Now, in any case, if you look at Maury Drive, as it comes down the hill here, it actually curves around, turns into 20th Street. It actually makes another little jut to go down this. If you go down that street, it's, the street's not very wide. So I'm trying to envision an emergency where a full-size fire truck has to access down here, if you put access through there. Now imagine you've got, this is a residential street, and you've got cars parked on both sides of the street. I dare say that a fire truck is not going to be able to maneuver through there and get there into the subdivision unless you widen Maury Drive to be three or four lanes, which means you're going to have to go into people's yards, take away some of their yard space, maybe their sidewalks, reposition. Those are things that have not been talked about here at all. They're, they're, you know, I hear the, the planner talk about pie in the sky, how wonderful a project he thinks this is going to be, but they don't think about the people issues. The people issues of, you know, my next-door neighbor, who wanted to be here, but he had a, a, another engagement tonight, he said, and he just moved to our subdivision like six months ago, bought the house next door to us, which had been completely redone. He says, "I moved here from Golden Hills because of the problem that's going to come up here of going up traffic of Maury Drive. I moved away from Golden Hills to get away from that problem. And now you're telling me I'm going to have to have the same problem here in my new, in this subdivision where I've just bought a house." And so, you know, as I read through, you know, I read over and over in the documents that contingent upon improvement of Gilmore Road. I encourage you to disapprove Phase Five of going through Maury Drive, of going through Maury. And I'll tell you what an alternative is. If you look on the map that they provided, right down here, the very bottom, this is Phase Five, okay, and this is bottom of Maury Drive, there's a piece of land here. It's privately owned right now. I don't know if anybody even lives there or not. I visited today. I would encourage you to encourage this builder to do whatever they can to acquire that piece of land. And then they could do an access straight over to Greg Road. And Greg Road has no residential on it.
Time's up, Mr. Draper. Thank you.
Okay. Dottie Draper, 9807 South 24th Street. And I actually have three different topics real quick. First, we've lived here about 28, going on almost 29 years, and twice that I know of, that creek has risen above its banks and, and has rotted the grass on both sides. Now, they say the drainage is adequate now. It's going to be worse with more housing. So I just want to make sure that that gets considered. Since it's risen above its banks twice already, I'm sure it's going to happen again. You know, it's not, someone's not going to just strike it, say, and quit. You know, it's not, someone's not gonna just strike it, say, and quit. Okay? Another thing, that traffic study, I wondered what time of the day it was done because rush hour is just crazy. Morning and evening rush hours are terrible, especially if you wanna turn left on the Twenty-Fifth coming out of Maury Drive. During rush hours, it's there almost four or five minutes. Now, in the middle of the day, it's not bad. You can get out in about a minute, minute and a half. I mean, you know, it's probably wasting your gas to do it, but you can get out. But the other times, it's really awful. And then in the wintertime, if you do a traffic study in the wintertime, you're gonna find it really bad. Sometimes Maury Drive is backed up all the way down to like Twenty-Second Street. Because only one car can come in or go out at a time because it gets really slick. And it takes both lanes, whether they're coming off of Twenty-Fifth into Maury or going out the other way. It's, it's just the angle of the road is, is really, instead of being flat, flat, it's like this. And cars, no matter which way you're going, you skid and slide off to the sides. So, in the winter, it's gonna be one car at a time in either direction. When you have one coming in, you can't have anybody else going out. And one going out, you can't have anybody coming in. So, that traffic study needs to be looked at again in, in bad weather. And then the last thing, I really wasn't aware of this until tonight. One of my friends who had planned to come, but her husband didn't get home to watch the children. So, she asked me to let you know that Gilmore Lake Road, there are a lot of teens and pre-teens that ride their bicycles up and down that road all day. There are kids between the ages of nine and twelve to thirteen that play along the side of the road. And on the road, they have forts, they build, um, pretend armies. They take their little plastic men down there, they set up battlefields and all kinds of things on it, on that little, um, big Gilmore Lake Road. They have all their, you know, they take down blankets and build forts in the woods and stuff. So, that is a lot, that's the only playground that, that Green Meadows has. I mean, it's not playground, but that's what they use it for, 'cause we have nothing. So, if that turns into a real street with traffic, it's gonna be some pretty serious consequences. And either the children are gonna get injured or they're gonna go into some kind of, you know, like, I don't know, drugs or alcohol or something really dumb because they don't have any place for their creativity if they lose that. That's it.
Hi, there, Council. Rob Larson, two-two zero-four George Circle. So, I'm in the Spring Creek addition. Uh, just a couple of concerns that have not already been discussed. One is, uh, we're putting in two-hundred-and-three houses and also the apartment complex with however many people are gonna be a part of that. On Twenty-Fifth Street, if you go past Spring Creek, it's forty-five miles a, an hour. And also, the, the turning lane, I would question, when they built Spring Creek, they redid the turning lane to make it more safety. My question is with Gilmore and, uh, the road down, uh, north, are they gonna do turning lanes? Are they gonna look at the speed? So, you got Spring, Spring, uh, Spring Creek, you got Sunrise, and there's a million houses over there. So, now you, you've got pretty, pretty competing subdivisions that, with a ton of houses. So, I don't really see that when you look at the plans that are presented to us. But, you know, I'm, my concern may be in rear-ended if, if there's too much traffic coming through there. So, could, could, maybe there be an assessment on the, the speed study? And also, truly, the, the study, I thought I heard that they just did a study on, um, Four and Five, but what about the whole package? Um, also, uh, the cul-de-sac, when I went to the planning committee, they mentioned that there's cul-de-sacs everywhere. Well, I live in a cul-de-sac, but it's three houses with quarter-acre lots. And that's a lot different than the narrow cul-de-sacs that they're putting in. So, you should consider why they're doing that, the cost effectiveness. But it, it just says, safety-wise, in the fire trucks and all that, we've, we've kinda hammered on that. I'll reiterate the creek. I back up to the creek. I see it flood. I see it draining, uh, cutting the hills in, uh, trees are gonna fall in. The responsibility is Spring Creek. I asked that in the planning commission, so it's on us. Another factor, two houses down, they have a, a nice, uh, fence that they put up. It's about two feet away, kinda their own fault, I guess, away from the creek right now. That's gonna fall in, or they're gonna have to do some kind of retaining wall. So, if you ever get a chance, I would ask that you take a look at the existing creek conditions. And he says it's adequate, but I see it overflow today. So, you're just adding to the flow and I'm, I'm just not understanding that. I'm not a, an engineer or anything, but from a homeowner's standpoint, it doesn't make sense. Uh, the other thing, um, I guess when you approve this, that includes the ability to put that apartment complex in. I wouldn't, uh, I would be interested in hearing that from you guys if that's part of this approval package. And the last thing I haven't heard is, uh, the voting of this. You know, the, the Phase Four and Five, the Gilmore hasn't been figured out. I've heard that for two years now. We all agreed to that. We would never approve this without the Gilmore agreement. And then out loud by, down by VFW, there's a piece of land that they need to negotiate on as well. I've seen the, the letter from the lawyer. So, there's two components that still haven't been figured out. So, I don't see how you guys could pass, uh, Phase Four and Five in the current conditions. And then whatever the NRD thing is that he was mentioning, two to three years down the line. So, there's way too many components, in my opinion, to approve Phase Four and Five. And then even for the first phases, you know, maybe that can be approved on individually. Maybe he can do the RS-72 for Phase One.
Time's up, sir.
And go from there.
Thank you. Councilman Prycer?
Just to answer the one question about the apartments, I believe that would, before the apartments would be built, that would have to come back before the planning commission and before the council. Is that right, Chris?
That is correct for site plan approval.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Nancy Schmazel. I live at ninety-three seventeen Spring Creek Drive. It's right on the corner of Spring Creek and Lola. Just a couple of things, and honestly, I got here late, so I'm not sure if these things have already been addressed or not. But, you know, when I look at the map of this plat, it's just a mess. It's a, it's a pieced-together, mishmashed mess of a development. I believe that it, you know, it's designed so that the developer can make a lot of money. You know, it's, it's beneficial to him. But as far as to the city of Bellevue and the people that live in that area, is this something we're gonna be proud of once it's done? If it's a mess on paper, it's probably gonna be a mess once it's done. So, you know, I understand from the developer's point of view, you know, making a lot of money is a good thing. But from the city's point of view, is this good for the city of Bellevue and can you be proud of it? Rod just, Rob just hit on this and I just wanna reiterate. We took a walk down the creek the other day, put on waders and walked down. And the erosion is significant. And a number of the residents have asked the Cid to look at it and, you know, consider how it's gonna be repaired. So, the increased water flow from this area, um, is going to erode the creek even more. And that falls on the occupants of Spring Creek, you know, the development of Spring Creek. It's really unfair for the developer to put something up there that's going to cause additional erosion to the creek that runs through Spring Creek. And he will accept none of the responsibility of maintaining that area. So, I, I think that really needs to be considered. Is there a road going under the OPPD power lines? It kinda looks like there is. And has OPPD agreed to that? Because I have a contact there that didn't know anything about it.
I, I believe they have. That's Dagmar.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then just once again, and we say this all the time, and nobody really seems to care or listen until something happens and then it's going to be a problem. There are children that play all over the place. There's balls in the street, there's children in the street, there's bicycles in the street. Increased traffic, increased speed, there's going to be someone injured, hopefully not killed. We say it, we say it, we say it. We're told the streets can handle the capacity. I just hope the children can handle the traffic because it, it's going to happen. I wanna, you know, thank the council over there, continued support of Gilmore Lake Road. I, you know, I, I hope that part goes through. That's important, you know, for the residents to have that second entrance. But some of these other things really need to be addressed before this gets passed to you. Thank you.
Jeff Pavel, eighty-six-ten South Twenty-Fourth Street. I just have a, um, I can't see how any of you can actually vote on this without, if you haven't been and actually saw the property that they're gonna do this at. Especially, I live on Twenty-First Street, everybody's talking about Spring Creek. Twenty-First Street, the road will not hold this. And they're saying, "Well, all the traffic will go to Twenty-Fifth Street." People are gonna find out it's quicker to go to Twenty-First Street to get to Kennedy Freeway than it is Twenty-Fifth. And then, if you do develop the road, last time we had the planning board, which was just a waste of a meeting, if you ask me. The answers were terrible. They asked what the new road is gonna funnel into the old road. And they asked the developer, his engineer, he's like, "Oh, yeah, sure." He had no idea. They didn't, a lot of, there's a lot of answers that haven't, not a lot of questions that have been answered. And I don't think they are gonna be answered till something does happen. If you do do Twenty-First Street, I think that needs to be like Gilmore Lake Road, needs to be developed the correct way before they put the development in. And then, maybe make Nineteenth Street a gravel road, have the developer put that in so all the construction traffic can go on Nineteenth Street. But hopefully, none of it gets, goes through and gets passed just because the land isn't really set up to do any of this. Um, it doesn't fit with the area. Even though they tried to make it fit, it's not gonna fit. The traffic's gonna be terrible. If they do do Twenty-First Street and redo it, they might as well add speed bumps because it's gonna become a drag strip. It's just a long, straight street. Um, is there gonna be sidewalks put on there? Do us as homeowners have to pay for those sidewalks, which I'm sure we probably will? Are they, are we gonna get money for the land they're gonna take to make the street wider? Or is there, when we built, I mean, is, is there already, I don't know what they call it?
Right-of-way.
Yeah, right-of-way already put in place? I just don't see how any of this is going through. There's so many answers, or so many questions that haven't been answered of everybody. The developer, how did they project thirty-five million on a planning board meeting? And now it's fifty-one million that's gonna bring into Bellevue? Well, what's that over, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years? I mean, is this development gonna go under? There's a lot of stuff that, how do you make projections? I mean, and, I mean, things, answers, questions for the public works and planning director, some of the answers were just terrible. I mean, just like they read off a piece of paper, I mean, and they didn't have answers for some of them. So, I just have a lot of questions and, uh...
Councilman Blood?
You know, a lot of what you're saying is exactly why I like the developers and whoever the representatives are. To speak with the citizens after the council meeting, um, when we have public comment. I think that you deserve a direct answer from the developer. Getting the ans, answers second-hand is not very fulfilling, as I can, as I hear all of you saying. And it looks like they've been kind enough to stick around. So, I encourage you guys, when this is off the table, 'cause we're not voting tonight. This is the second reading. It takes three, three readings before we vote. I encourage you to speak to the developer and to speak to the representatives and get your questions answered. And respond back to the council if you get some of the information that you, you're requesting. And when you don't get information on things, let us know that as well. We, we really, really encourage always, when we have any kind of controversy with new development, that the developers speak with the citizens. It's their choice not to do that, um, but so far, they've all been kind enough to do so. And pretty consistently, it's resulted in good things. And so, I really ask that you guys, with good attitudes, go and talk to them.
I mean, I just don't understand.
And see if anything can be resolved. And see if you can get your questions answered.
Why there's so many changes in the prices of stuff? It's just, it's, I've been, it's funny how, and why, everybody's talking about Spring Creek. Well, Twenty-First Street, there's not that many houses there, but we're all acres. And all of a sudden, they're gonna stick all this traffic, and we're gonna have all this traffic now on our street. Yeah, we're a dead-end street now, but, and we've talked about it over and over. Why don't you take Nineteenth Street through and it can catch all of the traffic from everybody? Well, this, nobody has any money to develop it. Well, who's gonna develop Twenty-First Street? It's county right now. Is the county gonna do it or is Bellevue? Nobody's given an answer.
Mr. Shuchek, you, you had mentioned something about that.
It, Twenty-First Street is a county road. There, they've been kept in the loop on this development the entire time. They've reviewed the project. When, um, this came through last year, whenever it was, the, you had the, um, developer do wharings on the streets, see how thick it was, how much it handled traffic. They received that information. All I can say is that they are aware of, of the, the project and the condition of the street and what needs to be done to it. When they might do it or when, when the city would do it if it were in the city, it is still unknown.
Is that, does that go for Twenty-First and Twenty-Third?
Twenty-Third does not connect, th, this development does not connect to the already-developed or the, the portion of Twenty-Third that has houses on it. There's, it's just, I'll say, farmland between the two, other than the, the one gentleman's part of his driveway. So, this will not connect up to Twenty-Third Street.
Thank you.
I just think Twenty-First Street needs to be, something needs to be addressed there before anything's done with this development. Because you're just gonna have a big mess on your hands down the line with who's gonna do it. It's gonna become a blaming game. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
First of all, I'd like to say that, uh, the studies I've heard about, uh, the cars and stuff, I don't think I would hold that too much to, um, being reliable. I think anybody that, if you got three-hundred houses there, count on two cars at least. You know, I don't know what kind of studies they're doing or how they're trying to say what kind of cars are gonna come out of there, but, uh, that's a general rule of thumb. Number two, um, with the water going down that hill, um, you know, I don't know, um, I'm not really thrilled on what they're using for their calculation and stuff. But I can tell you that living down on Fort Cook Road, somebody didn't do their math very good because it almost floods every time down there. So, um, I really think that, uh, you know, somebody needs to do a better job of, "Well, I think it is this or it could be that." You know, it should have some sort of engineer study, something more reliable than, um, somebody at the planning board that looks up a book and says, "Well, this is what we require." I think a lot of these people, um, I would be worried if I'm yours, if you were me. Because I tell you, you know, your three minutes that you get here, um, really doesn't do a whole lot of good with them. Nobody'll, uh, get up and move off of these seats and go out and look at anything that you're talking about. I've been trying to get them to do that for several years. Nope, it isn't gonna happen. So, let me know when my three minutes are up. I'll just stand right here and wait. I know you guys are in a big hurry to give us a whopping three minutes, uh, so, we'll just stand right here and wait for you now.
If you're done speaking, I'll ask you to take your seat.
Oh, well, I can keep talking then. I mean, you just let me know when my three minutes up.
We will.
I'll just talk about, just talk about, um, you know, how we should do this. And I think that as steep as that hill is coming down there, that water's just gonna be coming down and people are gonna have all kinds of headaches. So, you just will plan on moving, selling your house, whatever you need to do because it's not gonna get any better with, uh, the way the city is being run nowadays. Especially when, you know, you get your three minutes where you vote these people in.
Mr. Nemitz, can you turn this way and address the council, please? Because you're not picking up...
Why, is that, is that in the rulebook there too, that I have to face you and talk?
You don't pick up on the microphone in terms of recording unless you face the mic.
Okay, well, then if I, if I sit like this, then is that better then? Then I can hang on to it then? Does that work for you then?
Let's have you take your seat, Mr. Nemitz.
Is my three minutes up?
Yes.
Can I see the clock? I can't see from here.
Take your seat, Mr. Nemitz.
Sure.
Thank you.
Brenda Larson, twenty-two oh-four George Circle. Um, I just kinda have a quick little question. On the ordinance here and the way that it was read, at the planning committee, there was an amendment made to this about lots eighty and eighty-one. And it's not here. Was it supposed to be written on here as well? I mean, be, be, because what had happened is the neighbor that is, uh, one of the neighbors right off Twenty-Fifth Street had asked and said, "What about my property? Because when you bring this road off of Twenty-Fifth Street, you're gonna flood me out." And the planning committee did ask the engineer to come back up and, and, you know, answer what's gonna happen or what's your game plan? And he, and the engineer seriously come up to the microphone and said, "I didn't put much thought into..." and said, I didn't put much thought into that.
I believe the amendment had to do with, with requiring drainage on lots, I wanna say 81 and 82, something like...
Yes, it's something 80, 81, 82. But I just thought maybe it should be, it's supposed to be written here.
And generally, when a motion is made, if it were to be approved, we would add subject to, or, to the drainage lots, or adding the drainage lot, when we verbally make the motion usually. Mr. Shuchak.
The, the ordinance that Kay read would not include that. That's just a zoning change ordinance. That doesn't include, the, the planning commission didn't make a recommendation for a drainage easement on those two lots. And the revised plat that we have, and that you have in your packet, does show, down here in the corner, the, the drainage easement is on there. So they have made that revision to include a drainage easement on those two lots.
So today, we're just looking at you changing the lot sizes that are, is basically. So I do ask you to vote this down, for many reasons. Mr. Cook, I know you came out, you didn't like the, last year, the idea of that road coming up underneath the power lines. For that reason alone, and what everybody else said, I'm not going to take your time anymore. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Gary Bodus. I live at 205 Child's Road West. You know, I was just kinda wondering, at the last meeting, they were gonna build like 147 homes. And they said they couldn't put nice homes next to the Kennedy Freeway because of all the sound. Well, go on the other side of the Kennedy Freeway, look at the nice homes. There's some beautiful homes over there. You know, if they're so worried about the sound, let them put up a wall like they did down Interstate 80, a buffer, kill the sound. You know? And as far as 21st Street goes, I don't think it can handle the traffic. I had to put a turnaround in my front yard, just so I can get out of my driveway. A lot of them people gonna be, able to get on out with all the traffic. And that's a real scary spot, that corner anyhow. Because they got that hill coming up from the west, and it meets right about there. You know, and it, it's kinda like there's big banks on both sides. Blocks a lot of view around there. And, you know, I moved from Omaha to get over here, to Bellevue, to get away from all the riffraff of one family moving in a house and have 25 people more, and then you got trucks all over the yard parked, everything. Is that gonna happen here? Are they gonna screen the people to see if they're illegals coming in? You know, that's, that's what my concern is. I don't know if that's legal or not, to screen them. I don't, I don't really know, but, you know, it's, it's a possibility could happen, and when you got those narrow streets, and, you know, you're talking single-family dwelling. Well, I've seen single-family dwellings have 20 people living in a house, and each one of them owns a truck. That means there're gonna be trucks everywhere. And this is gonna happen. It happens everywhere. It happened in Omaha. They, they just don't care, because all they want was tax money from the people, saying, so they don't care. But I think Bellevue's better than that. It's a nice community, I like it, and I wanna stay. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
My name is Albert Sledge, 8605 South 21st Street. I live at the very end on the west side on 21st Street. We have a two-acre lot. And just on one side, where they wanna develop, I'm gonna have five brand-new neighbors. My concern is that this is so dense. I mean, if you go down 21st Street, a lot, most of them are acreages, at least an acre, so it just doesn't fit, which has already been established here for 20-some years. And I'm really concerned about the investment that we put in our ground, what it's gonna do, and the traffic, and the type of homes it gonna be. And I'd at least make the lots bigger, so it's not so dense. That's all I'm concerned about. But the density, like I said, it's just horrendous. It's like, get in, get out, start our homes, whatever. We, like, you said, we got a lot of those around here. And this is our small, little Shadow Lake. We're trying to beat some high-quality houses here, but throwing all this around it, nobody's gonna wanna even go there. That's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
My name's Jim Miller. I live at 9305 Spring Creek Drive. This is actually my second property I own in Bellevue. I'm a retired military. My family and I've been here 18 years. When we decided to buy this property, I didn't really wanna stay in Bellevue. I was wanting to go out towards Gretna. But we like it so much here, found a nice, quiet place. And this property in Spring Creek, I'm one of the ones that back up to the creek that has the erosion problem right now. So all I've got to say is, and I don't wanna take my three minutes, but all I'd like to say is, we know you're gonna build back there. I know in my heart, it's gonna get developed. What I would like, what I'm gonna ask the council is, maybe get them to redevelop it, so there's not so many houses back there. You don't need the 200, or whatever it's gonna be. You know, every time you come to a meeting, last year we were here, I didn't even get my first house payment made, and I was sitting in a city council meeting because of this. All I'm asking is, please look at the plan, he's got to do, we know you're gonna let him develop it. Just maybe rethink the number of houses and size that goes back there. And also, me personally, I don't wanna see the traffic come up through Spring Creek, past all the kids that are playing on the street and stuff. If you come out there anytime during the day, when all the construction workers are out there, and see those construction trucks zipping up down the neighborhood, we're afraid that that's the way it's gonna be, when, when they come through the Spring Creek Drive. Thank you for your time.
I will close the public hearing now. The final reading and vote on this ordinance and the preliminary plats will take place on June 9th. Councilman Blood.
I just wanna remind the people that are here in the gallery, on this issue, that the developer and his representatives are back behind the gallery. Now's a good time, if you wanna exit, to speak with them quietly, to, to get your questions answered. And again, I encourage you to respond back to the council upon getting the answers to some of those questions, be they good or be they bad.
Councilman Cook.
I, I got some questions. Mr. Peterson? I, I got a few questions for ya.
Okay.
We continue to hear about 21st Street and improvements to that. Who's, who's making the improvements to 21st Street?
Well, if you look at the, at the plat, 21st Street, as you go north, is owned by the county. And we don't have any right to do anything on 21st Street up to where our property line is. We've met with, with, you know, Dennis Wilson, the engineer, but that's, has not been an issue for the county. And I, I, you know, I've, I've heard the comments that this looks like a mess on paper. You have to take and look what property is available. And I heard this one lady suggests that you, we, we acquire property going south rather than Maury Drive. When Maury was, or when that development was created, Maury Drive was stubbed in, and that was the plat that was approved, with the anticipation that that would be the connection right there. So when this was developed, we followed what was anticipated for this development, where these access points were. 21st Street, beyond our boundaries, is beyond our, our control or our power, because there are private properties at about each, about each side, and the county has jurisdiction over it.
I'm sure if you went there, and the property owners wanted improvements, and someone was gonna pay for it, they'd love to see it. But 23rd Street, that doesn't go through? That ends on your property, 23rd Street?
23rd?
You got a little cul-de-sac there, then it goes a little bit farther to the north?
Is that, that's not through, is it?
That's not through. I...
Doug Kalner, 10836 Old Mill Road. Right now, 23rd Street is stubbed there, but there's rightaway platted to go all the way up.
Isn't?
It does not plan for an improvement at this point. As this would develop to the north, then they would connect the street in.
But how far away are you from homes that come down 23rd Street? Is it there, there's homes, there's no homes on 23rd? Yeah?
Yeah, there are.
So...
Except, the, the home is up at Virginia.
There's homes here.
Oh, that's...
Up here.
Yeah.
North of Virginia, right?
They're on north of Virginia.
Okay. So you're not stubbing up to 23rd Street?
Virginia's right here. But this is platted right away, so the city or county, it's probably county still.
Okay.
What is street in?
Yeah, sorry.
We're ending, we're ending the road at, at the end of the development, so there's a couple hundred feet of rightaway left that is not developed at this point. So it's rightaway for a street. The county could come in and build a street, or, or the next developer, as that property would develop to the north, would connect onto that street and take it to the north. But at this point, we would end it at that location.
Cul-de-sacs, there's about seven cul-de-sacs here. And I just don't understand why we can't loop those around like an upside-down U. I know you have to give up lots, but I think for public safety, fire trucks, rescue squads, police, I just, they are long cul-de-sacs. I think there's eight or nine homes on them, on, on a side. And I just don't understand why, the site, I mean, I realize you'd have to give up some lots, but you have an emergency on one of those long cul-de-sacs, a fire, you shut down that street for everybody else, where they can't come around the other way. And also, when, when, when you try to get fire trucks and squads in there, it is a mess trying to get them out of there. I had, last winter, came home from a city council meeting right across the street as a cul-de-sac, about half the length of these. And we had fire trucks and rescue squads and police cars there, and I'm telling you, they were jockeying around cars and vehicles and trucks for several minutes to try to find, you know, get the right vehicles in front of the house to try to fight a fire. And luckily, it never developed to that point. I think cul-de-sacs this long are horrible, from a public safety standpoint. And I, I don't know why you don't try to loop them, besides you would have to give up some lots. Do you have a response, or?
Well, the cul-de-sacs are very desirable, for people to live on.
I agree, I agree, in that sense of kids.
They're shorter than the required, or the maximum allowable required by the city code, so we aren't asking for waivers to extend a cul-de-sac or anything. It falls within the design guidelines, which is very common for most of the local municipalities around here, that they would extend 600 feet.
I thought our regulations...
We're less than that.
I thought our regulations, Chris, were sorta to discourage cul-de-sacs unless it was a very difficult piece of property to develop.
It, it does not. And the fire department, the street department, public works review this, and, and they, they do not have a problem with the cul-de-sacs.
All right. Multi, how, how many apartments do you predict would be built in phase five, I think? How many apartment units?
There isn't a plan for the apartment site yet. It would just be whatever the density is allowed by the zoning. It would have to come in for a, a plan at this point. The developer doesn't really have a plan. He was more interested in doing the apartments, but that, as part of the request for more accesses, he had to go find more land and, to get more accesses, and this allows for more accesses. So it's just kinda part of the request to bring this all together. It would be a very difficult land to develop for residential, single-family residential down there in that corner. So it seems like an obvious choice for apartments.
Will Gilmore Lake Road be built with sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes. The, the Dagmar Street, when I was out there, it just seems pretty, the elevations, the elevation just seems like it'd be a very, and now we heard someone, Mark walked off between the poles. I, I, I don't remember the distance, 45 feet or something. It just seemed like that'd be a very difficult road, not only to build, but to even, maybe even drive on. I thought that was going to continue all the way out to 25th Street. And that's not the plan, is that correct?
That's correct. It is not planned to go to 25th Street. It, it's just that short stub there. You're correct, there is quite a bit of grade there. Part of the grading plan is to lower the grades, to make that a little more of a, make it a better slope to grade, to meet the design standards for a public street.
I, I, I'm really concerned about this creek we keep on hearing about and the water flowing. I know Mr. Robertson, Mr. Shuchak has given us some information that, you know, all the engineering studies and everything are gonna be met. But the couple times I've been down there, especially as everything comes to the VFW, I think that's gonna be a challenge. I think Maury Street, trying to connect in there, will be a challenge. And part of my fear is, is I think in a lot of cases, we start approving things, and then two, three years in, another developer comes in and buys all the lots, and, you know, things like Gilmore Lake Road are not improved, and things are forgotten and not done. And I, I'm really having trouble with stepping into phase four and five down the road, because I, I just question if this developer will still be in, 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 involved.
I believe as part of the approval, the, the, the Gilmore Lake Road has to be worked out before four and five can go forward, correct?
Yes, we're, we're at the preliminary plat stage, obviously, and with the, as with the last time this was in, with just the southern portion, what the planning commission recommended is that phases four and five not be brought forward for final plat approval until a solution is reached regarding Gilmore Lake Road. As Mr. Peterson mentioned, there is a, an agreement, draft agreement out there that's being looked at by various parties. Obviously, it hasn't been brought forward for approval by the council yet. But we certainly would not have those phases brought forward to the council for approval, final plat approval, until that agreement is reached. I'm certain that with our attorneys and the council members, we would put some language in there, so that we wouldn't have the problem we have now with Spring Creek not having built the road, and statute limitations running out. We, we would work out some language to ensure that that road gets built, or houses don't get built.
Thanks, Chris. Couple more quick comments. I'm concerned about Maury Drive coming through. I believe Mr. Draper or someone mentioned, are you gonna put, or will need a right-turn lane? When that happens, city will be paying for it. Gilmore Lake Road, if there's a right-hand turn lane in that, down the road, the city will pay for it. I, my last comment is, I'm not, I, I think the process of requesting, or asking the county and the city to pay 25% each for Gilmore Lake Road is, is something that shouldn't be before us. It should be paid by Spring Creek and Spring Ridge, and improvements should be made. I know that Spring Creek had some financial problems. My understanding, they did not go bankrupt. I think the debt was bought by another bank or somebody. But the city of Bellevue and Sarpy County needs to make improvements to roads like 25th Street, Fort Cook Road, Galvin Road, Mission Street, and 36th Street. And I just, I don't, I don't like the city getting involved in making a road that pretty much is just gonna serve a development. I think we should be making the improvements to the major roads throughout the city. And, and we're, we're even struggling to keep up and do that. So, that's just a comment. Thank you.
I guess one clarification, the right-turn lanes will be paid for by the development, by the development.
On Gilmore?
On, on 25th Street.
Gilmore and?
On 25th Street, or at Maury.
At Maury and Gilmore Lake Road?
Right.
Okay, I, that's the first I heard that, that was be the case. Thank you.
Councilman Carmichael.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Masanek. Chris, there's been several comments about the runoff, the flow down the creek from the spring. Will all of that be tubed? Will all of that be tubed? Will all that be piped off of the, the new or proposed public right-of-ways and the flow coming down Spring Creek to the lake?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question, I don't, I don't think any of it's.
There's going to be storm sewer on every street, correct? And that's going to flow down to the creek? And then that will, in fact, take a southerly turn and go down to the lake, or will that be bypass the lake and go to the Ox Covert, which is directly south of that, down underneath the interstate?
And, and we'll, and we'll go to the lake?
Steve, the way that works is, and that was one of the things I wanted to bring up too, to make the distinction between the amount of runoff that's in the creek and the runoff that's in the actual development, those are two separate things, the creek is going to operate the way the creek does today. All the water, the overland flow water in the subdivision is going to stay within the subdivision, it's going to be retained in several locations, slowly released, and it'll end up down at the, where this, this box was that we were going to put in with the NRD. Which will ultimately then go back into what they call Spring Creek, once you get past Gilmore Lake Road.
Okay. Secondly, Chris, when the applicant brought the proposed subdivision to the planning department, and it was forwarded to the planning commission, why did we not require improvement on Twenty First and Twenty Third, in my opinion? Those are shown as ingress egress points on this plat, we have adequate right-of-way width that won't impact anyone's property. If a sanitary sewer were to be put in Twenty First or Twenty Third, that would not necessitate abandonment of a private sewage disposal system, it would only require connection to that system when that system failed on their property. But why did, why did we terminate at those two points and not require those roads to be improved to a public standard, which obviously they are not right now?
This, this doesn't connect to Twenty Third, well, it, it ends at Twenty Third, the existing Twenty Third Street right-of-way south of Virginia, it, it doesn't, the remainder of the right-of-way is, is outside the area of this plat.
But there is right-of-way, there is dedicated right-of-way south from the unimproved asphalt road that leads to Child's Road.
At, there is right-of-way between Virginia and this plat, yes.
Yes, so it could be improved in something other than private property, it's public property, even though it's not improved.
Yes.
Okay, why, why was that not required as a, as a contingent part of this plat? To diffuse traffic on Twenty Fifth and to make the ingress and egress easier for, number one, the residents that live there, and number two, the residents that will be in the new subdivision?
I think, I think it was believed that the, the access to Twenty, to Twenty Fifth Street would be adequate, and as well as the other access points would be adequate, adequate to serve this development.
Okay, and Mr. Draper, I, I did not go down into your neighborhood, the reason I didn't was, I owned a house on Twenty First, on, on Maury Drive, I raised my children in that house, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I know all the ingress egress points, I know the width of the right-of-ways, my kids played in that ditch down there, they played on the other side on the road, and they played up in those fields, and I've been up in those fields all my life. So I'm, I'm uniquely familiar with all the property and all the concerns that everybody has in that area. That's all the questions I have, sir.
All right, thank you. Over the weekend, I drove Twenty First Street, Twenty Third, Maury, Lola, ended up in a lot of dead-end circles turned around, so please know that we're doing our homework.
Thank you. As I said, final reading and vote on ordinance three seven six five, and the preliminary plats will take place at the next meeting on June ninth. If anyone would like to exit now, if you're only concerned with this item, I'll give you a minute to do that.
I forgot to sign this, should I sign it?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, yeah. Last one out, would you please close the door there, sir? Thank you. Let's move on to eight B, ordinance number three seven six six, amending sections in chapter two of the city code pertaining to the appointment of city officials to conform to state statute. Kay, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven six six, an ordinance to amend sections two dash one thirty-seven and two dash one forty-two of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to appointed officials of the city and the city attorney to repeal such sections as heretofore existing, to add section two dash one forty-three to the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the city engineer, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
I will now open the public hearing on this item, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. I was at the pre-council meeting, and I just want to make sure I got this correct, at the present time, the mayor appoints four people, city administrator, city clerk, city treasurer, and city attorney, that's not changing, is it?
No, it's not, that's, those are the statutory required appointments by the mayor, the mayor may make other appointments to, to city officials, but those are the four that are required by statute.
Now, this new ordinance is not going to make the mayor have another appointment they can make?
Is it?
No.
It doesn't add to the engineer?
Well, I'm sorry, it adds city engineer because we did not have that previously.
Oh, so the mayor could appoint the engineer then too?
That's correct.
With the approval of the council?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I will now close the public hearing on this item, third reading and vote will take place on June ninth. Eight C, ordinance number three seven six seven amended, authorizing the sale of part of tax lots S located in section one dash T thirteen dash R thirteen. I will open the public hearing on this item?
No.
Anyone wishing to speak?
I need to read.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kay, read the ordinance.
Ordinance three seven six seven, an ordinance providing for the sale of certain real estate, same being described in section one of this ordinance, directing the conveyance of such real estate in the manner and terms thereof, and designating an effective date.
All right, now I will open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I close the public hearing. Final reading and vote on June ninth. Eight D, ordinance three seven six eight, creating street improvement district numbers two thousand fourteen dash one and two thousand fourteen dash two. Kay, would you read the ordinance?
Ordinance number three seven six eight, an ordinance creating street improvement district numbers two thousand fourteen dash one and two thousand fourteen dash two in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein, and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
I will open the public hearing on this item, anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Eight one, resolution number two thousand fourteen dash seventeen, setting the date, oh, I'm sorry, that, that will, goes along with it and will ta, the, will take place on June ninth. Ms. Councilman Cook.
Jeff, was there any urgency here, or do we want to just move forward?
I would prefer that we waive the third reading and move this forward, just because this Forty Second Valley View, we do have some street undermining, two weeks ago, we had to go do some emergency repair work, we've got a contractor that we're hoping to get contracts signed soon, and another two-week delay. It may not affect anything, but then again, we may be out there with an emergency fix again.
Councilwoman Blood.
I understand that this is a concern, but I need a question answered before I can support that. I don't understand why we're approving D one, resolution number two zero one four dash seventeen, without an actual date being a part of that document.
Okay.
Because the purpose is to set the date.
All right, I say I can try, and then Kay, if I'm wrong, you can stop me, but if you want to go ahead and do it.
Kay, why don't you go ahead?
I could not fill in the date until I knew what date the ordinance would be adopted. After the ordinance is adopted, I have to publicize it in the newspaper three consecutive weeks, the public hearing cannot be held until a full twenty days following the first date of publication. So I have some dates worked out here, I know when I'll publish it, if it's adopted tonight, I know when the twentieth day after the first publication will occur, and the hearing would then be July fourteenth.
I, I'm, I'm not comfortable voting on it unless we have an actual date, because I feel like we're just voting on the document.
Well, you're not going to be, you're not going to be voting on the resolution unless you pass the ordinance tonight. If you waive the third reading and pass the ordinance tonight, I know the date that we can write in that resolution, and then you can pass the resolution.
Right, I comprehend that, I understand that, so you're telling me that we can do a date tonight if we approve thirty seven sixty-eight and we waive the third reading, that you have a date ready to go for this?
That is correct.
Resolution.
I have it written right here.
The street improvement district will be bonded, no individual residents will be assessed, so I would anticipate that there aren't going to be objections, since there's no individual assessments on this. Councilman Preister.
Mayor, given, or Councilwoman Sania, given what we've, we've heard, and, and I know that area, and I know there are some problems with drainage down there, so I don't like doing this under most circumstances, but given the effect, I, I would move to suspend the rules requiring three readings, we've already held the public hearing, so this would only allow us to vote tonight. So I motion to suspend the rules to allow us to now vote on ordinance three seven six eight.
Second.
I would second.
Motion by Preister, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote, my vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Councilman Preister.
I would motion to approve ordinance number three seven six eight.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Blood. Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
And do we want to approve the resolution then? Yes, Councilman Preister, and the date will be, Kay?
The, the date of the public hearing will be July fourteenth, and we always put six o'clock as the time.
So if the motion would include that date in it, that would be appropriate?
And my motion would be then to approve the resolution number two oh one four dash seven, including the date of, you said, June fourteenth?
July fourteenth.
July fourteenth?
Six P M.
You, you want?
Twenty.
Seven fourteen, fourteen.
Dash seventeen, not dash seven?
Oh, twenty fourteen dash one seven.
Uh huh.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes.
All voted yes.
Number nine, ordinances for introduction, first reading, ordinance number three seven six nine, vacating right-of-way, abutting lots one and two, Bellevue College addition. Kay, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three seven six nine, an ordinance declaring the necessity, expediency, and propriety of vacating right way, abutting lots one and two, Bellevue College addition, located in the southeast quarter of section twenty-six, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, not heretofore vacated, repealing all ordinances and all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and designating an effective date.
The second reading and public hearing on this item will be June ninth. Nine B, ordinance number three seven seven zero, authorizing the sale of the west side of Daniel's Farms, part of lot two, lot one, and outlots A and B. Kay, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number three seven seven zero, an ordinance providing for the sale of a certain described real estate, same being that part of lot two, in the northwest corner of section two, of approximately three point eight three acres, outlots A and B, and lot one, Daniel's Farm addition, a subdivision as surveyed, platted, and recorded, in Sarpy County, Nebraska, directing the conveyance of such real estate, and the manner and terms thereof, and designating an effective date.
Second reading and public hearing on this item will be on June ninth. Ten, public hearing on matters other than the ordinances, there are none. Eleven resolutions, eleven A, resolution number two thousand fourteen dash thirteen, approval of the inter-local cooperation act agreement, creating the Sarpy County Public Safety Communications Agency. Councilman Knudsen.
Yeah, Mayor, I, or Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilman, Councilwoman Sania. I delayed this two weeks ago, just because we wanted to study it more. There are a bunch of issues in here that we need to probably go over a little bit with the attorneys that actually wrote this up, I know it's been approved by other cities and the county, but there's some items in there that I just don't feel comfortable with. One of the things that's in there is that this agency can approve revenue bonds, and they don't have to have any oversight from the council, the council has no say-so in that, and I just don't feel comfortable with that. There's some other things that are on in there, I don't know if the rest of the council agrees with me, but what I'd like to do is maybe delay this two more weeks and have Mr. Sullivan sit down with us during pre-council in two weeks and explain a little more of this to us.
Mr. Buckley or, or Mr. Burlowitz, in terms of timeline, that's, I, I know there is a, a timeline when the agency, if it were approved, had to meet, et cetera, if we delay two weeks, are we still okay on, on the timelines in there? Yeah, I'm thinking July first was in my head, so.
The, the agreement, inter-local does call for the public agency to become actually active or in effect July one. It was intended that the agency would present a proposed budget to the county board for the upcoming county fiscal year, which starts July first and runs through June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen, so that doesn't probably preclude the current process where representatives of the cities have met with the county to discuss and go over budget concerns and, and more of a informal process, but it, it would preclude the ability to go through a formal process with this body being in place, so. There, there was contemplated that everything would be, you might say, solidified by the, the first of July.
So if we delay, it takes to June ninth, and we'd still be, probably be okay?
I think if, if, clearly, the council can meet with Mr. Sullivan, as well if there's anything that administration needs to do by that date, that will be a critical date, if we push it to the twenty-third, that's going to obviously create some significant issues with the other local governmental entities, so July ninth probably is, excuse me, June ninth, I don't think it's unreasonable, we just need to make sure that we get your questions answered, so you can take action.
Councilman Cook.
And one thing that's difficult is you shoot an email to one or two people, and how it gets thrown around in the mix and comes back to you, and I know maybe Pat, maybe at our pre-council meeting in, in two weeks could, could answer some of the questions, but I, I'd like to throw a couple things out for you to maybe try to get at least a preliminary answer for, if possible. I, I guess my biggest concern is, not a concern, I, I believe this is all moving in a good direction and in the right direction. One of the things is, is, are the mayors and the chairman of the county board, are they more of a rec, I mean, what are their roles in this? They talk about, there's, there's a page and a half of all the powers that they can do, and they talk about employees, and they talk about developing policies and SOPs, but then, I believe this all leads to the great possibility of consolidating with Douglas County. And, and from that point forward, I don't know what happens, who takes a lead, who makes, triggers things to happen, so I guess till two thousand, I'm going to be all wrong on these dates, seventeen?
July first, two thousand seventeen.
It seemed like, okay, the board. It seemed like, okay, the board with the mayors and the county board member will move things forward and have authority, but what happens if there is a consolidation?
Well, probably for clarity, and again, since I wasn't here this last week, and I know you had some questions for the city attorney, probably, I guess you might say the bottom line is, these agreements, as they would be enacted, do nothing in terms of moving towards any consolidation.
Do nothing?
Do nothing, okay? They don't, they don't move towards a virtual consolidation, they don't move towards a total consolidation. There was concern, obviously, because of the studies that were done regarding response times, regarding the cost per call, a lot of these issues that were significant in terms of what we call it performance standards, meaning national performance standards. A lot of that was driven, a lot of this was also driven towards moving away from a double levy, as you know, that was a key item. Currently, as I indicated, the cities really have no formal even advisory voice, per se, with the county board. You know, they've, they've had representatives of the cities and the law of public safety people meet periodically to get input, but there's, it's not a formal process. Whereas this actually would create the Public Safety Communications Agency, which by and large is still going to be an advisory board. It doesn't mean that they wouldn't have the ability to seek professional input or guidance in terms of how they would arrive at recommendations, whether it be budgetary recommendations, whether it be standards of performance that would be recommended, they could rely upon outside consulting or professionals that would supply credible input to them. Ultimately, it's not going to change in terms of the way things currently operate, the way, than, the way it does now. The county oversees the operations, they approve the budget for the E-nine-one-one, they, they basically oversee everything in terms of what's, you might say, goes, finally goes in a final forum.
Okay.
For instance, the budget, the, this advisory board will make a recommend, formal recommendation to the county board. The county board still has to approve it. The same thing with performance standards. The board, this advisory board with input, I'm sure from both fire and police, will look at proposing some standards that, that the, the E-nine-one operations will be expected to meet. The county ultimately has the decision in terms of to what extent standards will be implemented and enforced. So it's still a county-driven, county-controlled, it's just that there would be a formal mechanism to provide recommendations to them.
But it sounds like there's voting that would occur.
Well, there'd be voting in terms of the advisory board, it's like any advisory committee, you have to have a consensus in terms of what you're gonna recommend. It's no diff, in many ways, it's no different than the planning commission, I'll give a good example, they, they can only recommend to you, they can't, you know, they can't enact changes to zoning, they can't approve plaits, they can only make recommendations. Ultimately, you make that decision.
The final recommendation would be made by the county?
The, well, the, the final, the recommendation would be made to the county board, the county board would review it, and they'd make the final determination of what they were going to approve.
And which would be what they're doing anyway.
Yes, yes.
So when they talk-
All this, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. When we talk about this double taxation, is the goal here to, the Sarpy, the Sarpy County Board, the Sarpy County Public Safety, I can't think of the call. Public Safety?
Yeah, Public Safety Agent I.
Agency.
H.C.R., is that gonna be, they're gonna have bonding authority, are they gonna then, will a homeowner or a property owner see on their tax statement a public safety-type levy that would be the same across the county to pay for public safety issues?
You know, probably the bonding authority was put in there more for flexibility, it's conceivable if, again, without knowing really the direction that the county's gonna go, whether they do a virtual consolidation with Douglas County, whether Sarpy County chooses to enter into an, some agreement with Douglas to have them take over dispatching, or the county opts to do nothing. But say they're, say they opt to do some type of virtual consolidation or something that would be a significant cost, there may be expense to the cities at that point that, that would come out of that. Potentially, the, this advisory body could do some bonding to cover the, you might say, the costs of the cities. I can say that it's really not anticipated or really expected that this, the agency will bond, but they, they felt it was important that, I think the language, and maybe Tim can speak to it, or Pat needs to speak to it, that that at least be in the agreement if it became necessary and viable to do so. In terms of the, the double taxation or the levy issue, the way this is, was, is drawn up is this, as you know, this agency, which is again, it would be, in essence, an advisory board, will cease to be on June, as of June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Then the county has agreed that, as would, this would be enacted, they will take over the full responsibility to pay for the cost of E-nine-one-one. Now, that may be through a special levy that they would choose to utilize, it may be through the county's general levy, in other words, they would just increase their current levy to take on those costs, or if there's additional funds through inheritance tax or whatever funds that they might choose, currently, they could use any source of funding they wanted to, but in essence, they've agreed to take on the full burden as of July first, two thousand seventeen, for the cost, so that's why cities would no longer be in a position where we'd have to build that into our levy.
Let me-
Councilman Knudsen.
Go ahead.
If you want to respond to that, respond.
Yeah, because you said that that's gonna be, that agency will no longer be in effect. There is a statement in there that if they issue any revenue bonds, that it will stay into effect, that it's not dissolved at that time.
And you're correct, and that's probably one I wanted to defer to the city attorney on, since he was ever involved in drafting that. Clearly, anytime you, you take on debt, it's kinda like when you, when you annex an area that may be currently under the control of an S.I.D., any debt they have, you have to take on, somebody has to be responsible to see that, that debt obligation is met. Pat could probably speak to it a little more accurately than I could in terms of, of how that would be envisioned to prolong the existence of this agency. Like I said, I, I know just through the meetings that I attended, and like I said, I did not sit in on some of the meetings with the city attorneys because they were doing their, working on the legalese, so to speak, but it was pretty much a discussion intent that it was highly unlikely that debt would be incurred, but it was felt that, not knowing in terms of how things might move forward at some point with consolidation or not consolidation, that there would need to be at least the ability to issue.
I don't, I don't know if, I don't know who the chairman of the Sarpy County Board is, I don't know who their lead person is, I don't know if they-
Is it Warner Thompson?
To our pre-council meeting. Answer, I guess when I read this, I, there's just confusion as the authority, I, it seems like there's recommending and advisory, and then they list a page or two of powers. And to me, then we talk about the mayors and potentially the chairman of the county board have some type of voting authority, and being, all these cities are wonderful, but, you know, I don't want to get in a situation if there is voting power and authority, and it's gonna involve maybe a, a substantial bonding of something. Part of my concern is, and I have respect for all the people in those positions, is, you know, if you have a body of about six people that we're looking at, you know, there could be four of those people that probably represent fifty thousand people in this county controlling the decisions. And I, I don't know if that's, that would be a fair way to move forward. So I, that, that's the type of clarification. What, what is the true tasks and responsibilities of the mayors and the county board chairman, and what are their powers and authority and the decisions that they'll make for us? And, and I, I read this document, and to me, we get right to, I, I think all indication are, we're gonna do something with Douglas County, and then it just drops and stops, and then it's like, okay, now what are we gonna do with the five mayors and the chairman of the Sarpy County Board? What's their authority? What's their input? And then, or is that dissolved, and then we're at-
I guess-
-the mercy of Douglas County to move forward.
Yeah, I, again, I'd have to defer to Pat in terms of more of an explanation of, of the powers, unless Tim feels comfortable. Again, I, I just want to reemphasize that these agreements in no way, shape, and form move towards consolidation. All they do, they address performance issues, they address the double levy, every, double levy issue, which has been, they might say, angst for every local governmental, every city within, in Sarpy County, but nothing in here. Ultimately, at the end of, come July first, two thousand seventeen, it'll be strictly at the county's decision level as to what they do or they don't do. We can't force the county to, to do a virtual consolidation, we can't force them to, to do a total consolidation. Conceivably, at one time it was discussed, and this was, I don't want to get way back into the history, but there was even discussion at one time, and that there was the feeling of some of, of the cities in Sarpy County that they were so displeased with the quality of service that they were receiving from the county because of issues that were coming up, of talk of just going directly, more, more or less, getting out of their current interlocal and contracting directly with Douglas County for dispatch services or E-nine-one services. These agreements do nothing to force the county's hand. And all it says is that the, as come July first, two thousand seventeen, the county's agreed that they're going to assume the full hundred percent cost of E-nine-one, except for things such as terminal, you know, the mobile terminals within cruisers, some of the handheld radios, some of the radio equipment that would be specific to a particular city that we currently purchase now through grants or, or through our own general fund. It'll be up to the county strictly to decide what, if anything, they're going to do. So again, and I think, Tim, you could probably reinforce that, but come July, like I said, that's up to the county.
And, and I, and I just want to read this, and I, I know I'm cherry picking here, but it does say in turn, the agency we're talking about, we're authorized Sarpy County to operate the nine-one-one communication services for Sarpy County and Sarpy cities through a management agreement, separate interlocal agreement between Douglas County and Sarpy County. Sarpy County will delegate the nine-one-one communications operations for Sarpy County, Sarpy County cities to Douglas County. Douglas County would then operate the nine-one-one communications for all Douglas and Sarpy Counties. So there is discussion of leading down that road.
I'd like, I'll have to let Tim refer, address that. Again, clearly, a lot of, there, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of study, obviously, regarding consolidation, that's, that's a given. Some of it has purely to do with economics.
Sure.
You know, both the matrix study and the U.N.O. study show that there, it was an estimate of twenty million dollars, or five years, it would be saved in capital costs and two million dollars in operating costs, and both studies pretty much reinforce that. So there's those, there's cost elements in that. But I'm, and I'm not looking, are you looking within one of the agreements or narrative?
What will the new unified nine-one-agree, nine-one-one agreement look like?
Mr. Buckley?
That may be looking down, I may, I think that's looking past these agreements.
Well, did you have anything to add, Mr. Buckley? Or interject?
I'd not really to add, but I, as Dan said, I think these more detailed questions should be answered by Pat. He sat in on the meetings with the other attorneys and folks that met to draft these agreements. I mean, I, it's not, doesn't mean I haven't read through these, I have, and I have an understanding of what they're trying to accomplish, but, I mean, really detailed items, he's more intimately involved with the preparation and production of all this than I am.
I would really like to have someone from Sarpy County at our pre-council meeting-
Well-
-because I want to make sure that we are on the same page.
Well, I'll see about maybe if we can have Mark Wayne, for instance, or Scott Bobic.
Whoever would have good knowledge.
But I would say, again, just as the question's probably, put those, get those to us, or get those to Pat. Some may be able to be addressed pretty quickly, some may require some additional, might say, explanation to-
But, but some of my questions were, if we consolidate, and then the response back is-
Well, and-
Let's not worry about that.
Well, and, and again-
Again, I, if I send an email, two people know what I got, and I get a response back, the other four don't, they send an email, it's, the emails-
That's a little-
-for this is not a good way to respond to each other.
Let me suggest perhaps we have three-on-three meetings within the next two weeks with, with Pat.
Yeah.
And Councilwoman Blood, you had a question or comment?
You know, I just kinda want to cut to the chase. The bottom line with everything that's being discussed here is that we don't have a good conduit for information. And no offense to you, Tim, but you're saying, well, Pat has all the answers. Well, that's the problem. Pat has all the answers, and we don't have the answers. And this is not the first time in the last year that we have not had appropriate information prior to voting on a big issue. The bottom line, and no matter who becomes mayor, this doesn't change, the council is the legislative body, period, without exception, unless they change state statute. And to give us the responsibility to vote on something so important, especially when we're the biggest body in that whole group by far, is wrong. And so the issue isn't as much nine-one-one right now, the issue is, how do we prevent this from happening going forward? Good for thought, and we can't talk about that because it's not on the agenda. And, and to make sure that we all get the same information, because we can't do group emails, because then we violate the open meetings law. And we all are accessible, we, we all can be, can be phoned in for an iChat if we can't meet face-to-face or Skype. I mean, there, there should be no excuse for us not getting the information, and getting it piecemealed like this because we're upset about it doesn't benefit anybody. So, you know, the bottom line, all four of these resolutions have to be pushed forward, and it's really unfortunate that the other communities probably see us as being indifferent or worse pertaining to this, and, and that's unfortunate, too. I think we kinda look like buffoons right now. So, you know, I, I can't stress enough, I'm just, not just on this issue, but all issues, there needs to be a better can do, a better way to funnel information to us. We can't keep calling people out in a public forum saying, where's our information, we're not gonna vote on this. This, this has to be stopped, and it has to be stopped today.
Councilman Preister.
Thank you. I, I would agree with that. I was just particularly wanting to note, not doing it three-on-three, not doing it email. I think we need to do it in a public forum, I think we all need to be here, we all need to hear it, the public needs to hear it. So the only real way that we can do that is, as Councilman Knudsen suggested, and that's at the pre-council meeting, where we can have everybody in the same room, we can get the county representatives here, we have our attorney here, administrator, everybody is here at the same time, including any public who want to attend as well. And then we can ask the questions, because some of the questions that get asked trigger other questions in others of us. When we do it, as Councilman Cook suggested, through email, we don't hear all of the information, we don't hear all the responses, and we don't have a good opportunity to respond in, in the way that we might otherwise. So I would suggest that we do this at the next pre-council meeting, and we take whatever time it takes, because this is important to the whole county, but it's especially important to Bellevue and the people we represent.
Mr. Burlowitz?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, three-and-threes, for some things are fine, but you, it's no different than email, you're not hearing all the same thing, you're not answering, you're not asking the same questions, so it's somewhat of a, you might say, a less ideal process for these type of things. All I would probably ask would be, again, that by then, now then you'll have had time, hopefully, to get through them. Those things that are clear, clear questions that you have, definitely get to us or get to Pat, because we want to, in order for us to give good answers, we have to be able to do the research or to, to prepare the answers, so that way they're succinct and accurate to you and that type of thing. Because otherwise, I don't want to get to a pre-council and then, you know, we haven't had a chance to maybe look at something or communicate with the county or verify something. So I would just ask that, to the extent possible, get those questions soon as possible, in addition to whatever questions you've already asked, and again, yeah, pre-council's the time to address that, to allow you to make a decision, move forward.
Councilwoman Blood, did you have anything else?
Just exactly what he said, I, I would hope that the council members take their concerns, put it in writing, and pass it on, so they're well-prepared for that meeting. It just makes for a more efficient meeting, too.
You have clear direction here, Mr. Burlowitz, then?
Yeah, and along with the city attorney, yeah.
All right. If we make a motion, can we go A through D?
Yeah, consolidate.
Okay. Councilman Knutson?
I'd like to make the motion that we delay this for two more weeks until the
June ninth.
June ninth meeting.
Second.
Wait, Mr. Knutson, can you make items eleven A through D part of the motion?
Yeah. It'll be items, items eleven A, B, C, and D.
Second. Motion by Knutson, second by Blood. Any discussion? Please vote. My vote is yes. All voted yes. Takes us to twelve, current business. A is under consent. B, twenty fifteen funding request for Heartland twenty fifty. Mr. Yule presented at pre-council. I think now we have to agree, approve the funding. Councilman Price.
Thank you. I move to approve the twenty fifteen funding request for Heartland twenty fifty project in the amount of ten thousand dollars, I believe it is.
Second. Motion by Price, second by Blood. Please vote. My vote is yes. All voted yes. C, approval and authorization for mayor to sign an interlocal agreement for continuation of Papio Creek watershed partnership. Councilman Price, Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to delay item twelve C for two weeks.
Second. Motion by Carmichael, second by Cook. Please vote. My vote is yes. All voted yes. D, approval of the contract with Food Bank of the Heartland to allow the kids' cruising kitchen meal truck at the library. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Carmichael. Please vote. My vote is yes. All voted yes. E, approval of low bid from Valley Corporation for the forty-second and Valley View Storm Sewer Project. Councilman, Councilman Cook.
I'll make a, a motion to approve the low bid from Valley Corporation in the amount of two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-six cents, and approve the contract for the forty-second and Valley View Storm Sewer Project.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Price. Please vote. My vote is yes. All voted yes. F, approval of professional services agreement, and E, verify between the City of Bellevue and Burns and Knutson, second by Blood. Please vote. My vote is yes. All voted yes. I, approval of the agreement for construction engineering services, and the E, verify between the City of Bellevue and Alfred Benish. Councilman Cook.
I motion to approve the agreement for construction engineering services, and the E, verify between the City of Bellevue and Alfred Benish and company for the two thousand fourteen overlay projects, not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Knutson. Please vote. My vote is yes. All voted yes. J, approved bid from Cunningham Recreation. Councilman Knutson?
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid from Cunningham Recreation in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and three cents purchased of playground equipment for Everett Park, and authorize the mayor or the council president to sign the purchase agreement.
Second.
Motion by Knutson, second by Blood. Please vote. My vote is yes. All voted yes. Takes us to public requests to be heard. Please listen carefully. I'm going to read a different section of the council policy that normally isn't read, but I think is important. "Any issue presented for consideration by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public shall be made to the city council as a body through the presiding officer and shall not be directed solely to the mayor, any particular member of the council, any city official or employee, or any member of the general public." Testimony will be limited to five minutes.
I'm trying to figure out what's changed from ten years ago when.
Please identify yourself.
Oh, Fred Nimitz. I already did. Want me to sign it again?
Kay, does he have to sign again? No.
I'm trying to find out why, ten years ago, we couldn't tell how much money we're spending on the mowing contract that the city was doing. And then we went and put it up for bid, and it's been at bid for the last eight years. And then I see that the city has gone back to mowing it again. And since the beginning of the season, I don't know if, who can't see, who hasn't been looking at the quality of work that's being done. Again, I emphasize, I could take anybody down and show them Fort Cook Road, three seventy, any of the places that's been mowed right now. There's no weed eating being done. Somebody is mowing with a fifteen-foot mower that's mowing a grade like this that has went along and scalped all the grass. The grass is now dead, which will now be weeds. And I'm just trying to figure out how that is benefiting the City of Bellevue when we got people like this working for us that care less what the end result is. I can take you down and look at our sign down there on Fort Cook Road. Three feet, three feet tall is the grass around all the trees where it says, "Welcome to Bellevue." And then yet we wonder why nobody wants to come to Bellevue to build or open up a new business when the quality of work that our people are supposed to be doing is where? I mean, you know, and we're supposed to talk nice about what's going on here, but this is beating a horse to death here. I will in the next two weeks, and I'm just trying to figure out how, and maybe my city council member be able to tell me that, how do I dare get on the agenda to find out what we're spending per one mowing? Per one mowing, what are we spending now? As to ten years ago when we were spending too much? And yet, we're spending all this money for all this equipment, and yet, nobody knows how to do it. Nobody's out here supervising anybody, because if somebody was supervising somebody, somebody would have been fired by now. You put in a, an enormous amount on a previous contractor because I worked for him. I mean, he got a hundred thousand dollar tractor stuck seven times. He rolled it one time, trying to do a high, high-quality job for the City of Bellevue. And yet, now, you got people in here that, I don't know, you tell me what the problem is. Where they've scalped it right down by QT on Fort Cook. You know, they're mowing a bank that goes down and up at about a ten degree, and it's taken a hundred thousand dollar tractor down there where it's supposed to be weed-eated? I mean, you know, I don't know. I mean, it's really sad that nobody is paying attention to what's going on here. And why are we going this way? You know, if it didn't work the first time, what makes it going to work a second time? And is anybody care what goes on with the grass around here or what the city looks like? I mean, it's just, I don't know. I don't know if it's the city council or the administration, but somebody needs to be held accountable for somebody checking on this stuff, and nobody's doing it. If somebody was doing it, we would have a better quality. I just don't understand this. So, I'm hoping that maybe my city council member will be able to help me out here, and maybe the at-large can help me out as to how I can get on the agenda here in two weeks and find out what kind of money we're spending. Because I can tell you, after being in the business for thirty-five years, the way it's going now, and nobody can tell you how much we're spending on a per-week basis. Well, when you get people that are driving down here off of Franklin, going all the way out there, and they're weed-eating for twenty minutes or whatever they're doing, I don't know what they're doing. I know I've caught them down at the river BSing for a half hour and not moving. And this is at nine o'clock in the morning, and I'm sure that nobody has a break at nine o'clock in the morning, but I could be wrong. So, I don't know. Somebody needs to be accountable. You sit here and you talk them out the way we're supposed to talk, but nobody's doing nothing. Nobody's accountable. But yet, if I say something that's derogatory, well, I got to be accountable for it. So, then the man's going to tell me to get out. So, my question is, what happens when you guys aren't accountable? Somebody has to be accountable for this. And it's got to start soon. It's just like these signs. How many times have we been talking about these signs? We're going to get a northern sign. You go down there on Fort Cook Road, there's twenty-three signs within seventy-five feet.
Time's up, Mr. Nimitz.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, did you want to respond to any of it?
Sure, I'd like to. The reason we took back the right-of-way mowing was because of budgetary purposes, plus the quality of the work that the contractor that was doing it was pathetic. You drive down Galvin Road, you drive down Fort Crook. The grass was never edged on the curb. It was grown out into the gutter lines, which defeats the purpose of having gutters to collect the rainwater and divert them into the storm sewers. This was some of the worst jobs I ever seen. That's why we took that back. We are monitoring the amount of money that it's going to take by the end of this season to see what it is costing the city to do it. We'll reevaluate at that time. And I believe Mr. Nimitz was a part of the contracting crew that we relieved from doing this job again.
Chuck Frederick, excuse me, Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. I hope all of you had a good Memorial Day weekend. It was six years ago, May two thousand eight, that I, excuse me for this.
Maybe put that little sponge thing on it.
Yeah, put the phone back on there.
Maybe this would be better. I think it is. May of two thousand eight, six years ago, was when I got the public request to be heard on the agenda. I want to thank all the people who've been watching those meetings, and now, of course, you can watch it on YouTube. During those six years that I've spoken, one hundred and thirty times plus probably, one time I mentioned that, that with all the lawsuits Bellevue had, that we should change our name to Sue City, S U E, instead of, instead of Bellevue. Another time, with all the problems we had with cats, dogs, pot-bellied pigs, chickens, all the pet-pelucid we got, I think people were calling this Henry Dorothy Zoo South. Now, Councilman, I can change what I, what I've been thinking. And Councilman Senyak last meeting talked about the deers. She liked deers. And my idea would be for, if you want to have a slogan, you could have Bellevue, a deer place to live, D E E R. So, I know you like that one, of course. But that's, there's something you throw in there in the mix with all the other ones that are going in. Now, last meeting, December twelfth, really interesting meeting. And I have to read some of what that meeting is, because I was asked to prove some things, and now I'm going to prove them. I said that, in the minutes, I said, I said, "Mr. Frederick stated that he has asked many times, as has Jim Mudry, what amount of money or what percentage has been collected of the five hundred and fifty thousand the fire department asked the council to turn over to a collection agency to collect." I am wrong. It was five hundred and forty thousand. It wasn't five hundred and fifty. And I said, either nobody knows, which is a shame on you, or nobody knows and won't tell, which is shame on them. I don't, he, I don't, he does not understand why he doesn't get a response to his question of what has been collected of that five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then Mr. Brolowitz, city minister, said, commented that, since Mr. Frederick has brought this up a number of times, in order to evaluate your, your concern, it'd be definitely be helpful to have documentation as to what you are referring to in terms of the money. As, as we have, as we have is just a figure. This is incumbent upon you to present us with the some evidence of documentation, and then we will review it and determine it. Well, I got one question. You have to ask, you're not even supposed to answer any of my questions, just like the last time. The way you got the rules set up, I talk, you listen, I leave. And, and no response. And I don't expect any responses right now from anybody. But I'm just curious why, of all those ten times that I've spoken before about the five hundred and forty thousand dollars, somebody hasn't called me, or Mr. Mudry, who's spoken also, and asked about, you know, what are you talking about? All of a sudden, it came up last meeting. Well, that, that to me is, I just, is really strange, why all of a sudden that's popped up. And, and the finance director said, you prove it, so I'm going to prove it. On pre-council meeting, August thirteenth, oh, by the way, I gave this information to Councilman Cook and Councilman Carmichael, because they weren't here at that time, and also Eugene Curtin, who I don't think was the, was the reporter at that time. But all you others were here. And on the pre-council meeting, August thirteenth, two thousand twelve, there was a request to utilize the service of a collection agency to assist in the retrieval of funds owed to the City of Bellevue for services rendered by the medic units. And it, I'm not going to go into all of it, but it, it does refer to the five hundred and forty thousand dollars in fees. And Mr. Sanborn voted against it. He said, he, he wanted to know what was going on. Fire Chief Guido, Perry Guido, said that the memo is not meant to show a difference as to what was collected from the previous billing company to what it was taken over by the fire department. Well, it's been proven that cash flow billing collected ninety-nine percent of the money that they owed him. They have no responsibility for that five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, then we go to the council meeting on August thirteenth, the same day, two thousand twelve, and.
Time's up, Mr. Frederick.
No, I, I need more time, because you, you offered me, you wanted me to prove this, and I, I need the time to tell you what happened. It's simple as that. You can't be.
Five, it's five minutes now. Talk to somebody afterwards or.
No, no, I need more time. I want to.
Albert, Chief Albert, would you escort Mr. Frederick to the seat, please?
No, I have a vote by the council to, in order to talk longer. I have a vote by the council in order for them to talk longer if I want to. That's part of the rules, too.
Okay. Council, please vote on whether Mr. Frederick should get additional time? Oh, I'm sorry, Kay, what? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'm interested to hear what he's got.
I'll second.
Motion by Carmichael, second by Cook, to have Mr. Frederick, to allow how much time?
To allow five additional minutes.
Please vote. My vote is no. Excuse me. The vote is two to four.
You asked me to prove something, and I can't prove it. That's really sad.
Any of the other members that are coming up to speak, I'm sorry, but I have to leave. I have to go to work.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Draper. Signed in earlier. I, just two things I wanted to mention. First, on a positive note, I'm in the process of doing some changes in my home, and I, this last week, I, in the process of siding my home, I needed to hire an electrical contractor to remove everything away from the house on that side, so I could put the siding in and then put that electrical back in. And, and I had a positive experience, and particularly with the inspection by the city. City inspector came out the day after the work was done, and, and he, I was impressed. He called me on the telephone to say, say, Mr. Draper, I'm going to come out. He left, actually, there was a note, a note that was left on there. He'd come out, and I wasn't there. He says, well, I don't need to go inside your house. I just need to inspect inside your house. But I will come back when you're there, as a courtesy to you, because I don't want your neighbors saying, why is there's a strange man in your yard? So, made an appointment, came back and, and, and did the inspection. And then I asked him about some inside work that had been done, and he says, well, I don't have to inspect that, but I'll come and do that, too. And so, I just wanted to commend the permit, the permits and the inspection department of the city for the caliber of people they have that, that work there, that, that are very courteous, and they're very thorough, and they, and they do a good job. And I want to, want to commend those people. On a, another, another matter, I just want to encourage the council to keep doing the good job you're doing. Public asks a lot of you, and, but we have a right to ask a lot of you, because. Public asks a lot of you, and, uh, but, we have a right to ask a lot of you, because we elected you to do that job, and, and you don't have, nobody makes you stay in the job, somebody else is, be glad to step up and do the job. But I'm glad that you do the work you do, and, and, but I, I, there's a couple themes I heard today that kinda rang, that rang true to me, and that was, um, I heard the term used, uh, something is, this is adequate, or it meets our minimum standards. And, you know, that, having, being a veteran, being in the military, I'm just not used to, you know, adequate as being acceptable, you know? Adequate denotes mediocre to me, and so, I just wanna encourage you as a body, just, just because a, a project comes before you, and it meets all the minimum adequate standards that we've set up, uh, you know, we elect you to, to do what's in the best interests of the people of Bellevue, regardless of what the minimum standards are. And I think there may be occasions when a project ought to be disapproved. They, they've jumped through all the hoops, they've met all our legal requirements, but maybe the city council could say, "You know, we just don't think that's best for Bellevue." Thank you.
My name is Jim Modri, 1207 Rebecca Court. Mr. Frederick was discussing the $540,000 of uncollected emergency funds, rescue squad fund fees. As he said, August 13th, pre-council meeting, it was discussed, was voted on, August 13, 2012, meeting, to go forward to use a collection agency to collect the $540,000. Then, it was subsequently, uh, approved to use, uh, accredited collection services at the October 8th, 2012 council meeting. And, uh, as far as I know, we've heard nothing since on how much has been collected, where we stand, so, uh, just to finish, finish that up a little bit. The only other item I have is, uh, excuse me, item 12B from the agenda, so it's something that was on the agenda tonight, the MAPPA funding of $10,000. I wasn't at the pre-council meeting, so I don't know the story. Greg Yule gave you explanation of the money, and what it'll be used for in that, but, I've account, uh, attended MAPPA meetings on, uh, Heartland 2015, been to some of the planning And I would've had a lot of questions at the pre-council meeting, and I probably would've voted no. We're spending $10,000 for regional and central planning, taking away some of the sovereignty that we have at the local level, uh, to, uh, basically, in a manipulative way, implement Agenda 21. Some people tonight spoke about, uh, having acreages, and really enjoying those acreages. They talked about the density of housing going in, you know, in the proposed new area. You haven't seen high-density housing yet. Thank you.
Mr. Modri?
Yes.
Here's the information from the pre-council meeting on the Heartland 2050 project. You're welcome to, to take my copies. You're welcome.
Anyone else willing to speak? Seeing none? Takes us to item 14, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Blood, second by Price. Please vote. My vote is yes.